All right.
All right.
Um, let me see if it's seven o'clock.
It is.
It is. All right. We shall, um, uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, are you recording, Steve?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, April 7th. Please note the flag behind Dr. Kenworthy. Will you please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our troops and first responders in harm's way? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I think it's better if we just listen to you, Emily.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Thank you. We need a, uh, we need a bouncing ball or something to keep us.
Oh, the sound's out of sync. You can't really. Just the difference in distances.
Uh, okay, we had an executive, uh, session prior to this meeting. No votes were taken. Can I have a motion to seal the executive session minutes, please?
Don't move.
Second.
What happened?
Sorry, I just put the agenda up.
Uh, okay, I lost everybody in my screen. Hold on.
Yeah, just the agenda's up unless you don't want it up.
I don't want it up.
Okay, sounds good.
There we go. Now I got.
Everybody has the agenda then.
Yeah.
Um, so I have a first, uh, move by Ms. Ferber, a second by Mr. Shears, uh, and now we need a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Ferber?
Hi.
Mr. Shears?
Hi.
Uh, Ms. Holtman?
Hi.
Mr. Pri- Pyero?
Hi.
Ms. McDade?
Hi.
Mr. Vadney?
Hi.
Emily Copeland, I unanimous, seven zero, please.
Steve, can you, um, I'm sorry, Steve, can you unmute Lisa, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, Emily.
No problem. Uh, please let the record reflect that we have all school committee members present.
There you go.
Um, I think I forgot to have the emergency evacuation plan taken off the agenda, but in case your smoke alarm rings, please stick around.
Right.
Okay, how's that? Um, uh, so we're gonna try and make this as normal as possible, and at our regular meetings, we have public comment. So if anybody has a public comment, you can either literally raise your hand and, um, uh, we will see it, or you can raise your hand virtually with the raise hand feature. So is there any public comments?
None at this time.
Okay, seeing no public comment, moving on to our PHS liaisons. We are so excited to have you guys here. So, uh, Matthew and Raiden, can you please, uh, feel free to give us your PHS report?
Hi, I hope you're all doing well hearing.
We can hear you, Raiden, yep.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you. Just wanted to say before I started. Um, it's an early chaotic transition from in class to distance. However, I think we're handling it well and now that we like moved into our, um.
She's got a slow.
A slow connection, yeah.
Raiden?
Hey, Raiden. I can take over for her if she's having problems with that.
Okay.
Well, you also don't just give us.
Council-wise, we're still trying to figure out a way to conduct something of a spirit week, like stress and.
She dropped off, yeah.
So what she was saying was, uh, yeah, we, we did have a fir- kind of chaotic week last week. I do think it was, it wasn't that bad. It wa- it could have been worse. Um, I feel that now it's honestly the best it could be. I feel like I have no complaints. We're back. It's the most like normal we could have. And like, we're back in a routine every day waking up. It's good to have the structure. Uh, the only problem we were having was for student council trying to plan a spirit week. We were trying to see what we could do if like, maybe we had to drive at the high school and had people come like very separate, drop something off from their car, like without getting out, just pass it to like someone and have it sterilized, but we're playing with that right now.
Chris, Emily, yep, hold on. Yeah, you can't mute yourselves, unfortunately. There you go.
Yep, I'm just used to muting.
I know.
So Matthew and Raiden, I don't think Raiden, oh, there you are. Hi, I see we had a connection problem there. Um, but thank you for that report. How, um, have you been in touch with your friends? How's everybody's, uh, sort of, uh, mental health and, uh, everybody kind of feeling okay at this sort of very crazy time?
We've been, a lot of my friends and I have been doing the same thing as this with a Zoom call. We'll have these like, we have them like once a week at least, and we'll just like talk about what's, how we're doing. It's good to see people.
Good. Raiden, has the internet been a problem for classes?
Yeah, that's because, um, my mom and my brother are both using that for work or for school, so there's a lot of us on it all the time.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of people working from home. Other? No? Okay, well, thank you both so much. Dr. Kenworthy, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, just, uh, you know, uh, on behalf of all of us in the school department, Raiden and Matthew, just, uh, you know, keep the encouragement up among the students. I, I know that this is not, not been easy on, on anyone, and we are certainly trying to keep that student perspective in mind. You know, the, you know, the, the longer that this goes on, obviously, there's more of a need to make sure we can provide structure and support to, you know, make sure that, that teaching and learning is happening, but, uh, we're all in this together, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, um, with that, back to you, Dr. Kenworthy, for the superintendent's update, please.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so again, just trying to inject as much normalcy as we can into, um, you know, our new meeting format here for the time being. So typically, I try to provide a personnel update of anything that has happened since the last official school committee meeting, which would have been in, in late March. So I do have a few. I'm gonna start with, and let me just preface this with, um, I'm gonna read off some spring athletic coaching appointments. So obviously, this would, these would all be contingent on, um, if we did return to school, um, with enough time to salvage the spring sports season. So, um, you know, we have had a, an update from the Rhode Island Institute Scholastic League that obviously for any duration that school is not in session, uh, we would not be able to move forward with athletics, but they, um, just to kind of keep in line with the, the school closure timelines as of right now, uh, the only official word that we've received is that school, schools will be closed through April 30th. So the Institute Scholastic League did adjust the spring season so that if we were to return in early May, uh, they could still salvage some portion of the spring season, but, um, obviously, this would all be contingent on what happens further with school closures, but we did, uh, officially, um, recognize the appointment of, of, uh, some of our spring athletic, uh, coaching cadre. So this would, these would just be the coaches that would finish it off, uh, you know, for people that we had still been waiting for. So, a boys' assistant lacrosse coach at Portsmouth High School is, uh, going to be Sean Kelly, assistant freshman baseball coach at Portsmouth High School, Michael Larry, head softball coach at Portsmouth Middle School, Ryan Soares, and then, uh, unified basketball coach, Portsmouth Middle School, Tara McCarthy. So that, that just is up our spring coaching appointment. Obviously, the F, again, the spring athletic season is on hold, uh, right now and pending further information on school closure. So with those, in addition, we did have, uh, an additional retirement to announce since the last meeting. So, uh, Edmund Lima, who's been a longtime member of our maintenance staff, um, uh, this was not unexpected, um, but he did officially put in his retirement, uh, paperwork, so he, he will be retiring as of the end of the school year. And then the only other thing that I wanted to provide is just an update. So I had announced this, uh, formal retirement, if you will. Uh, Chris Moy, who's, uh, one of our school safety officers at Hathaway, he had already indicated, and something we knew, uh, that he would be, uh, he'd only been with us a couple of years, but he was going to retire, um, officially from that capacity, and he and his family were planning to move to Florida. So, Chris did inform us last week that his family had to expedite that with the current uncertainty, um, and, and felt like they, they were gonna miss a window. Uh, they were planning to completely kind of, um, you know, wrap up their, their living situation here in Rhode Island and move to Florida full-time, and they felt like they were gonna miss a window of opportunity to do that. So he is no longer employed with us, if you will, because he had to expedite that move to Florida. Okay, that's the personnel update. I don't know if any, the committee has any questions on that. Okay, next up, I had just an update again on, um, kind of a regular item we've included, um, for the time being on this kind of coronavirus, COVID-19, and school closure updates. Uh, we're gonna have a detailed, the, on distance learning in the teaching and learning portion, um, that Mrs. Appala and Dr. Caldwell will be, um, doing for us. So I'm not gonna get into too much detail on distance learning, uh, other than, um, as I'm sure they'll, they'll kind of preface their remarks, uh, we, we're entering what we've, we're considering, uh, in the district to be kind of the next phase of distance learning. So you've heard me kind of refer to, uh, we've, we're kind of taking it in, in steps or in phases with, uh, the official announcements. So we had that, that first week of planning during the week of March 16th, when, uh, the school vacation week was moved up, um, and then for the, um, weeks of March 23rd through April 3rd, that was kind of our first phase of distance learning, um, you know, what we were told to plan for up until that time. And then we've now since received word that schools will be closed at least until April 30th. So with that, we did a lot of work last week. Uh, you'll hear, you'll have more on that in the teaching and learning update, but we're, you know, we're in what we consider to be the next phase. So during that initial phase, uh, the last few weeks of March, um, you know, we were kind of rolling out our expectations, uh, for students, making sure that everyone had devices and, and working with families on internet connections. Um, and so once, you know, a- and we were in a pretty good place with that through those weeks, um, obviously, the longer that this goes on for, and the fact that we do, uh, in, in Rhode Island, we, uh, you know, the, the governor, the Department of Education has been very clear that we wanna do everything we can to, to salvage this school year as much as possible and make sure that these are counting as instructional days, so we have to be able to facilitate, you know, some teaching and learning to take place. Um, so we, we, we certainly, um, you know, thank our, our, our students and families for working with us, uh, in that, and we will continue to, you know, take feedback and make adjustments as needed. So with that, um, again, I, I mentioned at our, our last, um, time together la- last week, that with the, the school closure extending through month of April, obviously, uh, any school previously scheduled school events for April, I know, will have to be canceled. Um, and so that leaves some big question marks we realized from May and June. So, um, you know, probably one of the more difficult decisions to be made is around proms, which would, which would happen in May, and, you know, there's not a lot of great, um, uh, social distancing, um, substitutions for, for proms, unfortunately. But we do have a, uh, you know, that, that's an ongoing discussion, certainly, um, if, if school closure were to continue into May and June, but once we start to get into that time period, obviously, there's a couple of other bigger questions we need to answer, and, uh, one is around senior project. So, um, I did just want to, uh, I can prove, we can provide more details, um, as, as time progresses, but, um, you know, we would not be planning to totally scrap the senior project requirement. Uh, the high schools already been, been kind of working on this. Um, and then for us, um, what you have to realize is about 30% of our students have already presented senior project because we have an early, uh, presentation opportunity. Um, and so it would, it would obviously be an adjusted, uh, you know, we would kind of work with students on an individual basis for those who still needed to present and finish up, um, and, uh, taking into account, you know, any, any adjustments that would need to be made for the school closure or distance, uh, you know, social distancing if they still had events or other things that were tied into their project. So more on that will be coming. And then, then the other big one is obviously graduation. Um, I think best case scenario that we would all be hoping is that we would be back in time to have a formal graduation, uh, ceremony for the class of, of 2020. Um, if that is not going to be possible, then, then we are, we are starting to have discussions of, of, we will be doing something. You know, and, and what, you know, we'll, we'll share more details as time progresses and what that would look like, but, you know, we will not let the school year end without somehow recognizing the, a class of 2020 formally, um, you know, if, if, if schools are still closed up to that time period. Uh, also just wanted to mention, uh, a couple of changes to the, uh, the grab and go breakfast and lunch program, um, is, you know, operating for, for us, we think, you know, very well. Um, I've been saying, you know, we've been averaging about 75 meals per day, um, up till this week, it's sometimes a little, uh, less, sometimes a little more. Today, I, I get, uh, updates every day on how many, uh, today we gave out 99 meals. So, you know, we would, we would love to again, see that number just continue to increase. Chartwell's is prepared for that, but, um, as of this week, again, to, to, uh, be in line with the further, um, uh, you know, suggestions for social distancing. Uh, children are no longer required to attend this, this one, you know, all of this, um, you've heard me communicate, is, is, falls under the, the school, uh, lunch program guidelines, um, for the federal guidelines. Um, so originally, children attending was part of those guidelines, um, but now, um, you know, best, um, best advice is to, for families, to please actually keep children home, send one adult, just say how many meals are needed for, for children in those families. And again, right now, it's, it's a no questions asked kind of thing. Um, and then, uh, you know, our staff there for Chartwell's that is running that for us is making sure that good social distancing practices are in place. Um, did, uh, just wanna give a little update on, uh, the budget. Uh, so we've received, we haven't received a lot of detailed information, but, uh, on the town side, um, they are still planning to move forward with, um, official budget presentations to the town council, uh, later in April. So the week of April 20th, uh, they are planning to hold, and they will obviously do it in, in this, um, you know, Zoom, um, you know, format. Uh, but they are gonna hold their, their budget presentations. So, uh, on the school department side, we are right now scheduled for Tuesday, April 21st, and so that's the date that we'll be, uh, planning and prepared to present on. You know, right now, we're being told, we don't have any exact information, but, um, I, I think everybody's anticipating that we may need to make adjustments, um, to some things we've had planned in the budget based on, you know, the most, uh, nation that the town can have, uh, for their projections. So with that, I just wanted to leave open to the committee that I may be at, or a, uh, either finance or a capital, uh, subcommittee meeting, uh, leading up to, again, those are two main budgets we'll be presenting will be our general operational budget and then the, the capital budget that we present separately. So we, if I get more detailed information, we may, we may need a meeting, just to kind of formalize some changes there that we would have to make. Last thing that I wanted to say on the, the COVID-19 school closure update is just, uh, we're gonna be talking, uh, in the business portion about, uh, it just formally adjusting our school calendar for this year based on what we know so far through the school closure period through April 30th. Um, with that, um, the Rhode Island Department of Education did suggest, and, and, and every district has done this, that we, we all around the state, um, adopt the same calendar when it comes to distance learning as it moves forward. So there were some adjustments that you didn't need for April. This week, um, the entire state is going to be taking Thursday and Friday off from distance learning, and so, uh, you know, Friday was Good Friday. We had it off already in Portsmouth, as many districts did. Uh, so the state is just, um, has strongly suggested that, that each district add Thursday to that as well. That'll give everybody a nice long weekend. We are strongly encouraging, and they will not be school days, will not be distance learning days. You'll see that reflected in our adjusted school calendar, and I really wanna encourage, you know, families, staff, uh, whether it's the teaching staff or our own staff, uh, you know, here in, in the district, um, to, uh, you know, just take those days off. I think everybody needs, needs some time off here. We've all been working, you know, in, in some cases, uh, you know, uh, I think, I think the more, more common sentiment that you hear from people is that, you know, they feel like they're working harder now in many ways than they did, uh, before, um, this school closure distance learning phase. So I think everybody could use a nice break and time off this weekend. All right, so that is it on the COVID-19 school closure update. I don't know if there's any questions from the committee. All right, then, last, uh, two items that I have is just, um, you know, we just wanna formally recognize, um, A- April is autism awareness month. We have some activities, uh, and recognitions that would have been planned typically in our schools, uh, for that, and as much as possible, you know, I, I've seen our schools are still, nice that through some of the things they have planned, and also April is month of military child. So, um, I have a very strong military connection here in Portsmouth. About 20% of our overall population of our families, um, uh, it, we do get through our, our military, uh, connection here with the Newport Naval Base, so we, uh, you know, we, we very much value that, that connection we have, and we, we like to take this opportunity in April usually to recognize, um, you know, the sacrifice of our military families and children of those families who, who do have to sometimes move more often, um, right, than, than, than children typically would. So we wanna make sure that we, we officially recognize, you know, April being the month of the military child. And that is it for me, unless there are any further questions.
Thank you, Dr. Kenworthy. Um, I don't see any questions from the school committee members, but I just would like to say on behalf of all of us, thank you for all of the communications and the emails and the updates. I think, I think you're really trying to do a, a very, very thorough job of getting information out there to the community, and, you know, it's, it's hard, but the more information we get out there, the better. So, thank you. I know you and all the admin team's been working pretty non-stop too, so.
Yeah, we, we have. It's, uh, we are all trying our best, obviously, and, uh, you know, as I keep saying, we're all in this together, so we'll, uh, we'll just try to make the, the best situation we can out of this, you know, keep, keeping in mind that it's, at the end of the day, all for our students.
Great, great.
So on the grab and go, I think I heard you say there's no questions asked, so if I stop by.
Again, yeah, you know, right now is no questions asked, Mr. Farber, so you can try.
Okay. Practice too.
It's all, it's all in one pack, but it's a, it's a breakfast and lunch combo that, that they hand out.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for you.
Thank you. Um, uh, now, uh, we're moving on to the teaching and learning updates. Uh, I think really looking forward to seeing what all is going on in the, in the schools. So who am I turning this over to? Dr. Caldwell? Am I turning?
Yeah, so I will.
Gonna start. Oh, Dr. Kenworthy's gonna start.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'll, I'm gonna turn it over to them, definitely. Um, so we thought, um, again, uh, just to kind of get a little more detail and flavor of exactly some of the things that are happening in our schools throughout distance learning. You've heard me kind of lay the groundwork on that where, you know, we're moving into what we consider kind of the next phase for us, so that we can start providing some, some more direct instruction to our students through this. So Dr. Caldwell and Mrs. Appala will, uh, provide some of those details.
Great. I do think we wanna see the presentation.
Okay.
Okay.
So if you give me a second, everyone, your screen's gonna blink, and then it's gonna go to the presentation.
So I'll start while you're getting that settled, um, Steve. So, full disclaimer, um, Lisa and I may be presenting tonight, but the true heroes and the true workers, um, are the building administrators, the tech people, our instructional coaches, and all the teachers of Portsmouth. I'm just the voice tonight, um, presenting information about what's been going on in this terrific district. So that's my, my stand-up comment right at the beginning. This is about everyone, and it is not so thorough that every single thing is, is covered. I think you'll probably want updates as we go on. I'm not gonna rehash what happened in the last few weeks, although sometimes we'll reference that. I think the student gave a great testament to, the first two weeks for him were, you know, okay, we needed that time. We needed that time desperately to get everything in place. But, um, he was pleased with how things turned out this morning, and that's what you're gonna hear a lot about, um, in today's presentation. Lisa, anything to add to that?
No, other than the pictures you're going to see throughout are authentic Portsmouth students and faculty and staff, so hopefully that will also help to tell the story.
Beautiful artwork on right on the cover of Portsmouth Middle School. It's just gorgeous, those two pieces.
So also, as requested, um, I have all the principals and assistant principals should be unmuted, um, as, as, so you guys know that you're unmuted.
So Ms. Copeland, would you like to be able to ask questions as each page is rolled out, or do you wanna hold those till the end?
I think given the, uh, the technology, it's better we hold questions till the end, so, you know, let's just hold questions till the end.
Oh, everybody's here, and those experts are.
Uh-oh.
Lost her.
I lost her sound.
Yeah, we stopped being able to hear you, Kathy.
Oh, she's muted.
Yeah.
Hold on.
Did she block her microphone?
I got you. There you go.
Yeah.
Oh, something's up with her mic.
Did she accidentally hit the mute?
I, yeah, I unmuted her.
All right, it's now muted again.
Yeah. She may have to call back in.
Oh, she's unmuted. Yeah, not unmuted.
Yeah, she still can't, can't hear anything.
Um, I should go, I'm gonna let, I want you to let Lisa.
I got you. You're back on now.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
You may go on to the next page.
Thank you.
So this is, as, as you full, as I'm sure you understand, our schools represent different ages, um, and that whole developmental approach also applies to the work that we do. There are certain similarities, but I wanted to give you, we wanted to give you a picture of what it looks like in the distance learning environment. So if you're looking at our elementary schools, we begin with a morning attendance and a, a virtual meeting. That is a live virtual meeting with the classes. Um, then there's some small group instruction at different times during the day, and there are also some taped lessons that, um, children and families can access flexibly, and that's the name of the game for, for us, um, here in, in Portsmouth. We do not wanna have such a structured schedule, especially for elementary and middle, as families try to manage this on, at home. Um, that is a key component of what we're doing to try to create that balance. Many of our teachers have children. You know that so many people are working at home, so we've got a nice balance of synchronous and asynchronous, um, uh, instruction that from the feedback that we've received so far is meeting the needs of our family. Um, Portsmouth Middle School is making quite a few changes this week, um, uh, as they merge into that new, um, world, and they are videotaping lessons and being able to ha- shab those shown as well in a flexible manner if a student needs to see it once or twice. All children, um, enter through their Google Classroom. They, they get a playlist, and I'm gonna show you what a playlist looks like, and there's a great deal of feedback that's both live and through emails that students and teachers are able to access. Again, this is a very, um, a brief picture of a lot of connections, um, that are happening all the time. And Portsmouth High School today began a full, regular, um, kind of a regular schedule, eight forty-five to two twenty, A-days and B-days, and a flex day that I think is fantastic. Their flex day is after every A and B. No particular lessons, but meeting with the teachers and getting your work finished, and I think that's a really nice balance, once again, for students. Um, they use Zoom, they use a lot of flexible, um, videos, and they, um, submit their assignments through their Google Classroom. So this is a playlist, and a playlist is still how, um, elementary and middle are showing their work to their, to their students, and we even showed you a, um, high school playlist as well. Um, so, um, this is broken down into all the subject areas, and you will al- also see there's unified arts, like PE and music and every other topic and subject. Um, in the elementary level, they receive this daily, and, um, in the middle school level, which is on the next page, can you go to that, um, Steve? They may receive it, um, sometimes by the week. It's, it's available daily and by the week, um, depending on what's best for that family. And I also saw a wonderful playlist. And I also saw a wonderful playlist submitted by Lisa Goodwin of the middle school that took this same assignment and a special educator modified it for a student who needed a timed schedule. So that it isn't, we, we can create a schedule that works for a family that says, no, I want to see it today, eight to nine, nine to ten to eleven. That's what works best for my child. So a playlist is this group of assignments and activities telling you how to do it. And one of the other great things that our elementary school has done is they've also done a video. So every day a parent opens up the work and there's a video from a teacher of that grade level explaining the work, not just providing it in writing. This is an appropriate time if you wanted to question Ms. Copeland, just because we're gonna move on to some other things. Are there any questions about how this particular, you know, part of our distance learning works?
I think I'm gonna let Mr. Costa, because I can't see, wait a minute, let me see if I can get everybody back in here to see everybody in the exit full screen. I'm trying to get back. Here we go to, hmm.
See, no hands.
So any questions about, wait a minute, Tom Vadney has a question about elementary?
Yes. How long is the elementary school day?
Um, Lisa or Liz, would you like to answer that? But I'm also happy to do so.
Sure. So the, what the assignments that we've given probably total up to about two to two and a half hours throughout the day on, on any given day. The other thing that you mentioned, that the providing those schedules for students who need them, there's a lot of that happening at the elementary school as well. For kiddos who really need that structure and, and need to spend some time with the teacher, you know, they meet at different times. So I would say about two to two and a half hours. There's a lot of other things out there that elementary kids are involved with too. The Unified Arts can add a little bit to it. And also our science coach, Margie Brennan, has been putting out a science challenge, a skill.
Really great challenges.
Unbelievable. Like, and the pictures that the kids are putting up on Facebook are just amazing. And that's, I think, the kind of, the kind of break, if you will, that families need along with giving them.
And if I can just follow up with that, we've given teachers some, some flexibility, but we've also given them some structure on how to structure that schedule in their day. So they're taking from thirty minutes to an hour in the morning to have this morning meeting in attendance time where they're connecting with the students. And we also have them working as like a whole class type structure. And again, that ranges from thirty minutes to an hour depending on, on that lesson time. And then they're structuring small groups. So within those small groups will be different, different like cohorts of students. So depending on that student's day and if their small group is needing, it could be a little bit of a longer day for them.
Okay. I guess, have, have you, and I know it's really just been the first two weeks. Has there been, do, do they do like parent surveys or like, I know they're checking in with kids. Are they checking in with families to see how it's going?
So.
Go ahead.
So a few of our teachers at both schools have, have put together some informal surveys, but we're actually going to be sending out a survey to families early next week so that we can just kind of take a pulse on how they felt the first two weeks went and now this transition into a little bit of, of a heavier scheduled day. So hopefully we'll have those results for you.
And the other thing, Liz and I have, and teachers have too, and we're constantly meeting with our teams and getting feedback from what they hear from parents. But we also make it a point to reach out and call at least, I can say at least every day, I've tried to call and I know Liz has too, at least one family, if not two. And I'm happy to say that today, when I spoke to one of our families, I used one of their photos, which was absolutely beautiful for my updates and I wanted to tell her that. And she said, I just have to say that Portsmouth has done such an amazing job. She said, we're military. She said, we have lived all over this world. She said, I have friends. And she named all kinds of places. She said, and none of them are doing it like you're doing it. She said, you know, some places have shut down completely so they can figure it out. She said, you people moved this out like, like you didn't skip a beat. Like I have goosebumps right now. I'm not gonna cry. I already cried once today. But I just, it was, that's what people are saying.
Yep. I've gotten a lot of similar feedback.
K to twelve, K to twelve people.
Yep.
And may I say that last week, for the first two weeks, there was a hundred percent attendance at Melville and Hathaway every day because every single day, the clerks in that office connected with every single family that didn't get on in the natural way through Google Classroom. So that was what we were looking for. Who are we connecting with? How are we connecting? I think that that was absolutely exceptional. And that was the work of the clerks in those schools.
Can I, can I ask a question when you're calling out? Do you think that that's putting additional pressure on families that maybe can't handle it?
When we're making phone calls, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, for attendance.
Well, I think the good thing about that is that it helps us figure out why they're not checking in. So our experience has been very, very positive. So for some people, it might be an internet connection that we're still working. We have a couple of families. But I think it also tells us, you know, I think they see it as, wow, you, you really care. And let me tell you why we didn't check in this morning. And there are, there are lots of different reasons. Maybe both parents are working, someone wasn't in the home, but, but always we make that connection. I think people feel good about it.
And they certainly, they weren't like truancy type connections and phone calls. It really was about those first two weeks. It was all about us understanding what was going on with each family, whether there was a connectivity issue, whether they didn't have enough technology within the house. And, and that actually is still, we're still dealing with some technology needs, not because there isn't technology, but because there are so many people in the house now using technology and all using the internet. And it's just trying to work through all of that. And yeah, our clerks have been amazing with that piece of it. So, so the phone calls are really more of connections, making those connections with families.
Any other questions on the section so far?
One real quick, what is the attendance for the middle school and the high school? Understand some high schools have issues with attendance.
Alright, so I, I was checking that daily and I'm, I'm sure that the middle school and high school principal can come in. I was checking it daily. And again, very, very strong in the first two weeks as we were trying to make sure everybody was able to connect and making, making their presence known. This morning's attendance, as I checked it, was about a three percent absence rate at Melville, maybe three percent at Hathaway. I think it was seven, seven percent at the most at middle school. And I think high school was the highest in around twelve percent. But principals, correct me if I'm wrong, which is actually less than it is on a normal day. Oh, yeah.
It's much, much, we usually on a daily basis, more or less, we have anywhere between eight to ten students. There are three or four of them that will be there on that list almost every single day. And we're working with that. There are extenuating circumstances that go with those particular students. The attendance has been extremely positive. That is, am I still on?
Yes.
You're still on.
That is also due to the, to the hard work that has taken place between the guidance counselors, the school psychologist and also a social worker that are getting in touch with our families on a daily basis. Teachers, when the student does not show up for the, the morning attendance piece, teachers, teachers get in touch with those families to find out also what is taking place. During that particular time, which is a live virtual, also instructions are given to those students that have questions on their playlists for that particular day or any announcements that will want. Some of the playlists do have morning announcements on a daily basis in order that the students are familiar what, what they're going to do for the day. I do have to say that, that the piece that is very, very strong and has carried this forward is that the administration team has been in constant contact with the leadership team and the student support team and the liaison team and the faculty and staff. We have had a faculty and staff meeting on a weekly basis. We will continue to do so in order that we not only answer questions and Lisa has put on a Google, a Google document in order that they can ask questions throughout the day. But we like to have everybody together on a weekly basis in order that we can find out what the problems are and how is it that we go about those, those issues in order that we can bring to the students the best possible throughout the week. Like Mr. Sappala said, there are many things that are taking place outside of the classroom, if you may. There are many challenges. We also have had the opportunity to create some after school virtual clubs. We have one that's gonna go on the air very soon with our librarian. It's a book club. We also have a Mrs. Brennan with the AG Innovation Club that actually has twenty-five students to participate. And these are students that, once they return to school, they will be going into six acres of land. There have been basically access to us, to our students in order that we can create flower beds and gardens, vegetable gardens, and a farmer's market and so on and so forth. So right now, virtually, they're doing the planning aspect of it. The design before they get their hands on, if you may, when they come back to school. We've been having physical, physical education challenges. There was one that touched me very much so was a poster challenge that one of our teachers addressed all the students and asked them to make posters and hang them into their windows. Do if someone would go by as a first offender, that they would see how they would be thanking them. And it was a thank you poster for those first, first offenders. We also started our beginning of distance learning with the Spirit Week that Mrs. Storm put it on. It's so, there is, there's a lot, a lot of things that are taking place that we wouldn't be able to put all the photographs up of what is taking place. But we keep on working. Our very next venture is that Portsmouth Middle School is going to put on a jazz band concert. And we're also looking for a tri-AM concert in order that they can play for their friends at home virtually. So that's in the works right now.
Okay, Joelle, you're showing off now.
I am because you know what? I didn't think I was gonna have any time after those two ladies started.
You're gonna get them. Don't worry, the rest of you have equal time later.
I'll, I'll tell you something. Before Steve came to this meeting, I offered him a chorizo sandwich so he would mute me.
I didn't mute you. I unmuted you.
And I don't know if Lisa, I don't know if Lisa wants to say anything else. Thank you.
I bet she will, but we're gonna hold it till later. So thank you. Steve, let's move on. And Lisa Caldwell, would you take over?
Stepping up.
Okay, so, so as you know, you know, Kathy's talked a lot about the educational side of, of things and the preparations that took place. And one of the, if you've, you know, paid attention to a lot of what's happened in the news as schools have closed down or moved to distance learning is a lot of the topics have focused on special populations such as individuals or kids with disabilities and multilingual learners. This aspect of distance learning sure, certainly should not be underestimated. Through all of our hard work to plan for teaching and learning, there's also been the other side of planning for special education and multilingual learners. So in the area of special education, I would probably first like to start by thanking the coordinators. Danielle Laurie, Dina Duffy, and Brooke Grant really have been working side by side with me as I've been working side by side with Kathy and the building administrators for the bigger teacher and teaching and learning picture. So in the area of special ed, you know, some of the things that you read about are concerns nationwide regarding the ability to deliver special ed services to kids with disabilities. I think here in Portsmouth, we have really done exceptional work. And I think that that exceptional work is due in part to the planning. It's due in part to the planning of special educators. It's due in part to the planning and the support of the building administrators. And I think that we are really, similarly to what Lisa Little said, I do think that we are doing some great work and really leading the charge in this area. So some of the things that our teachers have been doing in concert with their general ed counterparts are that they are working with students in small group and individually, they use email, they use Zoom, they use Google Meet. And of course, they use the old fashioned telephone. Support professionals, so speech OTPT are consulting and working with parents as well as directly supporting students. Again, via email, virtual meetings and telephonically. If you, Steve, you don't have to flip, well, if you could flip back just for a bit. If you look at that first picture to the left, that's on the front cover page. That picture is probably what says it for the support professionals for me. One more cover page. And that would be Amy Hart. She's our speech pathologist. And that's an actual image of her working with one of, as I say, our littlest learners in a virtual sort of situation. The cover slide?
On the front.
All the way to the front.
Very first one. There you go.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So that's Amy working, you know, as you can imagine, for those of you who have children, trying to work with a three, a four, or a five year old for any sustained amount of time is no easy feat. But our Ms. Amy is doing some nice work in that area. We have actually begun to do virtual IEP meetings, virtual reevaluation meetings. All of the procedural stuff that the federal government has not given us any flexibility in, we have started to do those meetings this week. I made the decision to suspend all meetings for ten days so that special ed staff, general ed staff, support professionals could spend a solid ten days getting some level of footing in the teaching and learning domain. We are not conducting evaluations that require face to face evaluations. We will have to take care of those evaluations once school resumes and opens. And then our RBTs have been integrating into classrooms with certified teachers through Zoom and through Google Meet. We know that the RBTs in particular have been very excited to be able to integrate into classrooms. So that work started at the end of last week and really has taken off the beginning of this week. So, so that's what's happening on the special ed front. One of the things, and I could probably talk about this for hours, but I promise you I won't, is that one of the things with respect to special education that makes folks quite nervous is that we, as I mentioned, we have no, there are no waivers right now. There are no extensions of timelines procedurally on the procedural side of special education. So there's been guidance that's been submitted by the federal government, but I'm constantly watching that so that I can make sure that we remain in compliance on that front. Overall, our teachers are working very hard, you know, to meet the needs of, of students. The picture down at the bottom is of Ms. Andrea. She's our preschool teacher. She's conducting a science lesson. And the picture at the top is Mr. Mason Dooley, who is a high school student at the high school, obviously high school student at PHS. In the area of multilingual learners, Mrs. Ragland is our ESL teacher or multilingual language learning teacher as well as our MLL coordinator. She has been working to support students through the classroom. She's been monitoring student progress on Rosetta Stone. One of the things that emerged is that Rosetta Stone was made available to students for free of charge and we've taken advantage of that. She is providing feedback on high school work. She's phone conferencing with parents and coaching them and consulting with teachers.
So assessment. In our first couple of weeks, our focus was the work. Let's get the work organized. And of course, right now that it is well organized, it's all about how are we going to assess this? And this is another different animal for us to, to deal with. We don't have that same level of interaction with students. The same one-on-ones, the same, well, we have plenty of, of good opportunity to work with them in small group. But when you're not face to face with someone, it is different in terms of. But when you're not face to face with someone, it is different in terms of the full expectation of what's assessment going to. I really think this is another wonderful opportunity that we're going to have and everyone is going to have in our state as they learn how to teach virtually and get the best assessments possible. It's all about what, what is the best way to demonstrate learning? And it is not always in a typical standard test. And sometimes it's in a deeper way, and it's in a lot more writing and other means that children can evidence what they know. Now, here in Portsmouth, we are going to do a transition kind of a, of a approach to this. We are not going to get rid of the report card. And we are going to find ways through our instruction to best assess children, but still be able to report. And so we're working with Beth Farley, who's our data person, to use our current system, but be able to be honest and true about the assessment of children that we're doing. Perhaps not having as many assessments, nor perhaps as, as many objective tests, but other ways. And Portfolio happens to be a favorite of mine that we could do some experimentation in. But we are going to, don't worry, deliver a final report card at the end of the year that will reflect what's going on for children. So assignments are submitted, and they're submitted in a variety of ways, and I just mentioned a few of them. But we want everyone in the district to know that the elementary school has finished their first two trimesters and their third, and they just have recently sent home report cards. So they began trimester three, I would say, yesterday. And you will have, parents will have that report of children's progress at the end of the year. And middle and high school really finished their, finished their work of quarter three on March 13th. That's the last day that work was submitted. This is a makeup period right now. Students are able to submit work to their middle school and high school teachers to complete that. And then that quarter, quarter, third quarter will close on the 21st of April. And the work that they're starting now, as of yesterday, is the beginning of their fourth quarter. So I just think it's a wonderful opportunity, and we will take advantage of this time to work with our staff professionally on how do you really evidence student work in this new, in this new era? Any questions on that, Chair?
Well, why don't we wait till we go to the end? I think that might make a little more sense.
It does. Okay, thank you. So technology, we could not have done what we have done in Portsmouth without a tremendous technology team. So on behalf of everybody, I would like to call out Steve Costa, Jake Karen, Beth Farley, Ray Ballard, Kim Rail, and Laura Stanton for the work that they have done. They had a survey up and ready in no time, which, as you see, 1,700 people responded. And those probably represent the majority of families in, in our district. The purpose of that survey was what's your internet access? And as you know, we, they've been working very hard on that, and we've had a lot of support from our governor, from Cox Cable, from Verizon for hotspots. And we're down to probably less than 10 families that are still being worked with relative to technology access. Steve, do you have a change on that figure, or is that about what it is today?
We had another, because of the PK students that we helped out today, probably that number is going to be a lot higher for device Chromebooks, and we're roughly under 10. Probably around seven families that need internet that we have teamed up with Verizon to get some hotspots. And we're preparing those and disinfecting them and getting them ready to send out or have parents come pick up.
Okay. And the distribution of Chromebooks is now up to closer to 195 or so.
Roughly.
And many people have devices in their home. And we started out with thinking, many families thinking they didn't need help. But as all of them returned to the home for their work, their devices were utilized. And so we opened up the school, and you see a great picture below of Melville School handing out their Chromebooks that day. Liz Viveros went car to car and handed those Chromebooks. And so it's closer to 195, and it's now been distributed from school to families who are in need of those. I'd love you to take a look at this link, which is the PIT Crew Update. This is a weekly document. And I don't know who the prime author is, but today's poem on the Wordsworth poem on daffodil really set me right into the right place. So you, if you could read this, school committee, I think you'd see what we're talking about in terms of expertise and dedication and, and humor, and it's a great support for teachers. So take a look at that when you do have time. And when I talk about support for teachers, working virtually is something very new for somebody in my point of career, most certainly, and for many other teachers in our school system. Now Portsmouth has been utilizing wonderful platforms for technology education for a long time, but this is taking it even to another level. So you have two technology coaches in the district, Tim Marham and Sarah Del Santo. And the professional development, support, and consultation they provide to teachers and administrators is phenomenal. I can't even, we didn't even have the time to show that to you fully. But Tim, Tim's technique tips, Sarah's videotapes, as she shows teachers how to actually conduct instruction virtually is just incredible. And as all the new programs and the new platforms come out, they do that research for us and bring it back to us for consideration. Their, their work has been tremendous. Continue, please, Chris. And Lisa, can you take over?
Yes, ma'am. So the last thing that we're going to talk about is communication, connections, and culture. And you heard Mr. Aruda really start to go in that, that direction, and he may have a little bit more to say as we go through these slides. But one of the things that we know about distance learning and that we've learned about distance learning has to do with the three Cs: communications, connections, and culture. It's important for us as a district, as you know, to communicate. Mrs. Copeland, you know, you talked a little bit about that in terms of Dr. Kenworthy's efforts, but I think that it's been a district wide effort. Principals, building administrators, my office, IT, there's been lots of communication that's been exchanged among, between, and throughout the district and in the school community. So I think it goes without saying and won't be any shock to anybody around the communication tools that we use between our Blackboard Connect, Dr. Kenworthy's communications, building administrator videos. You might have seen Mrs. Storm, you know, begin some of that culture to connect and connections to connect kids. Mrs. Viveros has done the same. I saw Mrs. Little also post some videos of herself when she did virtual, virtual, Mrs. Little, you did an award, a virtual award for?
Yeah, it was for a music award.
Music award. So there's been lots and lots of, of efforts to, to communicate within and among our community.
And I'm just gonna mention the survey, you know, that you had asked Miss Copeland, the high school surveyed starting almost immediately. And when we, when they shut down, I think they had 800 and something responses, and that included parents, students, and some teachers, but teachers are providing their input in lots of ways. And so they will do another survey, but 800 responses, giving them input in the first two weeks to help them design this, these next two weeks. As I said, the efforts were really around getting this up and running in elementary and middle, but their surveys are going out next week. So we are very definitely survey driven and, and need to hear from our constituencies. So I hope that parents and community people who are listening today will do those surveys next week and turn them around quickly so that we can use them in our PD Day on April 17th to even better design our learning going forward.
In the area of connections, we talk about connections even when we are in school, when we're talking about MTSS and, and students having the opportunity to seek out that adult, to seek out that staff person in the school community that they feel that they can talk to or reach out to. Well, connections still exist in distance learning. So you've heard a little bit, or you've seen a little bit about how that's done through communication. But I think that across our district, we've had a focus on every student through outreach. You heard the Mrs. Sappala talk about how at the elementary school, there's been a concerted effort to do that outreach to students. At the high school and the middle school level, the same has happened with guidance counselors or school counselors, psychologists, and social workers, making sure that they are touching kids. And we're ensuring that kids are engaging in the work. And if they're not, we're reaching out to try to find out why and how we can support them. Which brings me to the, you know, to the next bullet. Our mental health staff has been pretty active in reaching out to students, whether through providing them with some mental health in-person support, some small groups where kids can come together and talk about various issues. And of course, parents and guardians who are partners in this work. We could not do the distance learning that we have done without the parents and guardians of Portsmouth. They are critical to, to the work. They're partners in the work. They, they are really, really some heroes that we should be celebrating as well. As you know, many of our parents are working from home. Some of our parents are still going to work every day. And their ability to balance and really work with their children has been tremendous. Steve, could we move to the next slide, please? The last thing I'll talk about is culture, and, and this has been pretty exciting to see. Again, I think that as a district, we really do a nice job across the buildings sharing what's happening in terms of, in terms of our culture. So I bring you back to Mrs. Storm's videos. You know, that she has done, Mrs. Viveros, you know, broadcasting from her deck. I actually thought it was my deck when I first took a look at it. And, and the like. So some of the things that have been done in just this short time that we've been distance learning are listed, are listed there. You can see our, our friend with crazy blue hair because there was a Spirit Week that took place last week, and Crazy Hair Day was one of them. I think that the middle school you had, or somebody had a sock day. Other schools are doing a week in tweets. At the high school, they did a freshman academy wave. Mrs. Mrs. Brennan STEM challenges are pretty tremendous. So we have lots of, lots going on. And the one thing that we do want to talk a little bit about is the April Reading Challenge. So we know that Governor Raimondo put forth this reading challenge to students. However, here in Portsmouth, as you can see, we've taken it one step further with our own reading challenge. So if you go to hashtag Portsmouth Rhode Island Reads Community, you can also see that we are increasing our efforts in the April Reading Challenge. I don't know if somebody wants to jump in and talk a little bit more about that. But I know that the building administrators may have a little bit more to say about culture, so I'll kind of you know, turn it over if somebody wants to jump in and talk about something that I may have missed or that they really want to highlight.
And the April Reading Challenge is hot off the press finalized today by our school librarians. And I'd expect that Dr. Kenworthy will be able to sending it out on his next communications to the school committee, to the community, to the teachers, and everybody can get involved. So that is the bottom right hand corner flyer. And when it's sent to you and you're able to see how to participate, we certainly hope our school committee will join us in participating in this reading challenge as our governor and commissioner would like us to. So that's the completion of our presentation. And our principals and assistant principals are here for any questions that you may have. Mr. Ferber?
No, I just want to say I'm very impressed.
I think we would all echo that. Karen?
I'm, I'm blown away. I really am. This is extraordinary work. And, you know, from everyone in the district, I think. It's remarkable, a lot of the issues that other districts have run into, including the district where I teach, you've managed ways to address those problems and solve them. And that's, that's very admirable. It's really, you're doing wonderful things for our students.
I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, Mrs. McDate, I appreciate you saying that as, you know, as, as a leader in the district, I think to what Mrs. Sappala had shared at the outset, it kind of ties, this presentation ties everything together into what you said in that we spent the first 10 days really setting up systems or really setting up a structure and then amending that structure. The buildings were critical. I mean, Mr. Amaral and his team were meeting with the teachers consistently to get that feedback to be able to then come forth and say, okay, here's a change we need to make. Mrs. Little, Mrs. Viveros did the same thing across grades, across schools. And at the middle school, they did the same thing as well. Mrs. Goodwin spent a lot of time, you know, even contemplating the construct of the playlist, how kids would be assessed. And, and I think that putting that upfront time made such a tremendous difference for us. And I think that as a leadership team, as teachers and educators, we're absolutely committed as we move forward, anticipating or should we need to move forward, you know, that we will make changes as we need to.
I was going to say that what's been done is, is amazing. I think that the whole system has been able to adapt on the fly. But I think also, if people really look at it, you've also opened the door, I think, to education possibly in, in different manners, adaptation, whatnot going forward. So I think that, that you've, out of the necessity, it's almost like when the people went to the, went to the moon, that there were certain items that were created to accomplish this. I think that by the necessity of us doing these things, that it's going to lead to other situations with the curriculum. And we may be looking back as the years go by and say that this was really just the beginning, if we just carry this forward. So I think that's what's, what's been done is, is exciting, and I commend the mental capacity and the heart that went into putting this together.
That's a good way to describe it.
No days.
I just wanted to add in, though, I, I think everyone's done a really good job, but as we look to ramp up, and I know everybody's trying to do their best, but this has been incredibly hard on parents. My husband and I are working from home with a three year old and a six year old. Every assignment per six year old, you have to be there with them. It turns into a fight. It's really hard. And I think we're excited about ramping this up, but we can't do it as parents. There's too much anxiety. There's too much stress, and this is adding more.
Kate, I, I want to say that we, we have, we have talked about that because I know, you're so right. You're so right. I, I left a message today with a family that I saw a post on Facebook, and her post said, you know, it said, reading, math, writing, a community meeting, and a science experiment. How can I get it all done? You know, she has a kindergartner, a second grader, and two little ones, and I don't think, I think the dad is working. Do you know what I mean? So I think we are, we've been, I want to say, we've been very sensitive to really going really slow with this because we know that, we, we, we talk about this a lot in KDA too. Because, you know, it's a little different with the older kids. Sometimes they can, a lot of times, they can do things on their own. They're in Google Classroom. You know, it's not that they don't need support. They do. But you're right. K1 and 2, they need you. They need somebody there.
And I don't know, I don't know if I'm supposed to be on a small group instruction or a daily meeting. I'm not. I may have missed the email. But I have a friend at Melville who is, and she's really struggling. An hour out of my work day to do a Zoom meeting would be insane right now. And so I, I know, I know we're not, but I'm talking about a friend of mine who's at Melville with a kindergartner. So I really think you need to, I know everyone has the best of intentions, but our country is under a lot of anxiety, and parents are under a lot of anxiety. And I don't know how, I don't know how that fits into all this.
I, I, I kind of, as the other parent of school age kids on the committee, I, Kate, I completely agree with you. Like between my nine Zoom meetings a day, and then my biggest thing, and this is to add to what she's saying is, I want to, I'm running into the, the wall where I'm getting screen fatigue. Where like I even had to take a nap before even get onto this call, just so that my eyes could readjust. And I'm kind of afraid that my kid being in front of a screen, as much as I try to remove him from it, I just wish there was something we could do in order to motivate kids to be outside more or. I just wish there was something we could do in order to motivate kids to be outside more or just do something that's not in front of the screen because the amount of times, like between my work and then like giving him his pad, getting him on his way, but then finding that he's watching Minecraft videos and it, it becomes a struggle with my kid. And, and I think that a lot of parents are dealing with that right now.
The best part of my day is the time I get to go on a bike ride in the middle of the day that I never get to do on a regular work week. That's the best part of my day is getting to take Ben for a 20-minute bike ride. And the, the schoolwork, you know, the first 10 days were manageable, but I noticed a difference this week and it is a fight, a screaming match. And it's not been good for my family.
I agree. I, I, like I had to pull Quinn from his and it'll be like, just go outside, let's just go outside. Because I see he's getting frustrated. I'm getting frustrated. And either we're going to like never get through this or let's just change the situation.
Not to diminish the hard work. I understand what everybody's intentions, but it's really hard, really hard on parents.
A, a, as, as a district, we're leaped and bounds ahead of other districts. I've, I have my own work colleagues who are actually elected officials in other cities and towns around the state. And they're like, wait, how the hell did Portsmouth manage this? So kudos to everyone. Like I appreciate everything that everyone's done. And, and just like really keep up the good work. But I just, we, we should, as much as like great work we've done, just like let's keep these minds, like these things in our minds as we're like planning ahead.
I, I would like to say, I, I, I think it's really important that we, we listen to that, that that concern about how it affects the family, not just the kids' education for the next month and a half, which, you know, we're all kind of excited about doing all this new stuff. But, you know, at the end of the day, we, we do want our families intact. And while, you know, at the high school level, I think this is something that, you know, meeting every day, having that structure, having that social interaction, they can get on, they can do the technology. I just, I think that's awesome. I mean, we're doing that now at the university level as well. And I'm, I don't know middle school. I think middle school is probably in the middle. But I do think we, we, and I know that elementary school principals and, and leaders are so cognizant of this, but I, I, I think we do, you know, I, I don't know if this is something that maybe the superintendent needs to bring up at the superintendent meetings, but you know, is, is there a way that we can really balance for our youngest learners kind of these expectations? And I see Lisa Goodwin has something she wants to say.
We've been, thank you for that feedback. I think it's excellent feedback and it's something we have been telling our staff continually is that we need to afford families grace and flexibility in this time. And if, you know, we offer our, our quality lessons and our assignments, but we also have to respect that it, it may be too much for families at this time. And that is why we're, we're monitoring and adjusting as we go. We are planning on using the report card. And we may have to, we may have to take a look at that moving forward. And we have more conversations about that tomorrow, but that has been a concern and has been on our radar for our staff as well. You know, we are teaching, but we are, we are in a crisis first. We are trying to work from home. Our teachers are going above and beyond to do their best, but I think we, we have to get that feedback from families to guide us as we go forward.
That's why I'm really encouraged to hear that you guys have been using these surveys a lot and, and I, from the high school and going out at the elementary school, I, I think that's, that's really, really healthy. Don't we also have Dr. Kenworthy that, that thought exchange? What is that? What was that called? Thought exchange?
Exchange. We do. Yep. We're, we're, we still have that at least through the end of the school year.
I mean, maybe we just want to send out one simple question along the lines of, is it too much? Is it too little? Is it the right amount of work? You know?
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, I mean, we can certainly do that, but, you know, I, I get emails, as you can imagine, you know, quite a few is, you know, and I'm, I'm sure they're funneling up through the principals as well. I think for every, I think where we are, all of these perspectives, it's about balance. You know, for every email that I get, you know, and the sentiments that Mrs. Holtman or Mr. Payaro expressed, and I certainly understand, you know, I have young children as well. My wife is a teacher. You know, needing to balance everything is, you know, for every email we get like that, we get another email saying, hey, what, you know, my, my, my kid's not doing enough every day. So it's just, you know, I, I think it's a work in progress. We can't stress that enough. Anything that we've rolled out right now to get into this next phase is not set in stone. We need to get that feedback. We will continue to make adjustments until we, we find that right balance.
And Tom, can I just, I, I just really want to echo something that I think we pride ourselves on in Portsmouth, and that is our connections and our communications with our families. So, so if you're feeling this way, or if you have friends who are feeling this way, please, 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 like I said, I try to call parents every day, at least a couple, or of families that I might think, you know, might be having a hard time, but we don't know. We don't know everybody who is. So if you like, just call us, you can, or email me and say, you know, I really need to talk to you. This is too much. We can talk about it. Like we're, Liz and the principals and assistant principals, our guidance counselors, our social workers, we are the people that we, we need, even the teachers, but, but while they are doing what they're doing, we are the people who can talk to you and help you figure out what to, you know, let go of because it's true. We are in a crisis. And, and, and first and foremost is your sanity and your kids and your family. You're the partners in education. You have to make a lot of the calls and, and we can provide support for you. So please, please encourage your, your friends and your, you know, colleagues, whoever has children at any level to reach out to us because, and maybe we need to send a stronger message that, that we're here for that. Honestly, it really, it breaks my heart that you feel that way. And I know you know, we're working hard, but it breaks my heart that I didn't know that. I, I want to help you. I want to help. We want to help everybody.
We all do.
I know. So please, please have people reach out to us so we can, we can.
Is very important for us. So thank you. And hopefully, once we send out the survey at the start of next week, we can gather that information, meet up with our coaches again and our teachers. And if we have to change, you know, parts of our structure, certainly we'll have those conversations. So thank you.
We're all in this together.
Absolutely.
Can I add? I didn't have one more. Sorry. I'm sorry. Can I just add one more comment? And that's, I think that often parents value education and value the opinions of educators so much that when you send home something that says, these are the requirements, they take that very much to heart. And it might, it might be helpful to include an explicit message saying, you know, as parents, you need to make the choices that are right for your family. Because, you know, ultimately, how the students feel over this period of time and what they're able to take in, in their everyday life is going to be more important than whether or not they complete a specific assignment or, you know, take in a certain amount of content area. But I think sometimes parents wait for that kind of permission to say, you know, you can make this choice. And certainly when there are grades in the balance, that makes a difference as well.
I, I just don't want anyone to have an impression that when I said grades and of, of all of the people in your administration right now, I'm the old timer. And, and the drive and excellence and the, the, the desire to provide a good quality education is absolutely tempered by our, my, and everyone else on the team, our belief in the sanctity of family and the time and the balance. So this kind of feedback we can work with. I want, when I talk grades, I just mean, you know, our military families who are going off need something to say that they completed a year. We've got all those little pressures to deal with. We can find a way to do that and deliver a family-friendly education. I know we can because we all believe that ourselves. So I want to say to my, to our school committee members who are parents, thank you, thank you, thank you. What you're saying absolutely comes into play with exactly how I feel about this and the messages I've been, we've been working. We've got those not conflicting, but two different issues we have to deal with and we'll get it right for you and for all of us. I know we will.
We will. And I think those states that have, have, have made the decision to throw in the towel, so to speak, on the school year and, and you're not have any expectations, they're going to have things they're going to have to figure out, you know, through all of this as well. You know, I, I, I think, you know, it, we certainly want to strike that, that balance, but we, we want to be able to salvage something that we can, you know, of a school year here as well.
We can do it.
Yep. Nice. That, well, I, I know, Mr. Emerald, we've, we've heard from the elementary in the middle. Did, did you have anything else you wanted to add about the high school?
Well, I just wanted to let you all know that we, we took three major things into consideration when we looked at our, our parent-student survey. And that was they wanted later start time. They wanted shorter classes. And they wanted to be able to have some flexibility. So we added in their flexibility days for the students so they wouldn't stress them out. And give them time to digest some of the information, be able to be effective that way. We don't start our day till later in the day, about an hour and a half later than we normally do. And our class times are cut shorter so that the students have some, some flexibility to do some of that work. But the other thing that really is important in terms of connections that I wanted to mention earlier, I think that really makes a difference is that our staff has been meeting with students every single day in advisory. So that's an awesome connection. I have my own advisory, meet every day. They're very comfortable. They, they feel a sense of normalcy. I can, and I, I, one of the things that, you know, any issues that come up, it comes up during advisory. So I think those connections are very important. And I think that hopefully we'll get our spirit week off with our, with our culture in the next couple of weeks. But right now, kids are just feeling, I think generally a little, little bit better about coming to a regular school day. But I can understand the concerns of the, of the elementary parents. I think we, I have emails of, of kids who are distressed because they're, they're working in a, an area to try to support babysitting their younger brothers and sisters. And I had a couple, I just met with a virtual, I had a phone call with a, a senior this, this morning about being flexible about her classes because she's helping out with her younger kids. So I understand that's happening. We created some flexibility for those older students to be able to help out with the younger students in some cases. So we're all trying to be sympathetic and try to be flexible. I think the key word for us at the high school, and I think with Dr. Kenworthy has been emphasizing, and Kathy Sapala is saying, we need to be flexible. And we need to take graduated approaches, approach. And that is what we're doing. So hopefully we'll continue to work out some and refine some of the kinks. But I think overall, I think we're in a good place. And I think if we're, at least from the high school perspective, I think if we're looking at our neighbors, they went full dive in at the very high level and there's been a lot of crashes. I think because of our graduated approach over the last two weeks, we've been able to smooth out some of the curves and problems that we've been, have been associated with students and parents and issues. So I, I think that we are listening and we're going to continue to listen to parents and students. Because as you said, there's a crisis going on and we have to attend to their social emotional needs first and then address the academic needs and certainly the, the, the needs of the families. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vadney?
Yes. The town provides some funding for Newport Mental Health. I'm thinking maybe this would be the point in time where we should invite them in and get some consulting from them. See if there are some techniques that we can use to take the pressure off the parent. Because it seems like we're doing a great job with the kids, but I think parents are being overlooked. And if we bring in, again, they're nonprofit, you know, we can give them some money too to help out, help them out. I think we probably would be helpful if they can maybe have techniques or maybe guidance on maybe how to better manage this.
Good suggestion.
Suggestion to look into. Yeah, we have a great relationship with them, so we can certainly look into that.
Okay. Well, first of all, again, I know everybody's been busy. I know you all have had long workdays. And I can't thank the administrators and the people who worked on this and the tech people who really put this together. But I, I do think, you know, it, there, everybody knows a little bit of a piece of things that are going on and it's, it's kind of nice to see sort of the, the bigger picture across the schools and across the different areas. And then also, I think for you, hopefully it was, was helpful to hear some different feedback and, and that. I just, again, I think we all would say, you know, everybody's doing a great job. And as Dr. Kenworthy says, you know, we're all in, all in it together. So if there aren't additional comments, again, having said, thank you for the teaching and learning, can I have a motion to approve the school committee minutes of March 10th, 2020?
So moved, seconded.
By Mr. Ferber, seconded by Mr. Shears. I have to do roll call votes now so that everybody's clear on who voted how. Mr. Ferber?
Aye.
Mr. Shears?
Aye.
Ms. Holtman?
Aye.
Mr. Payaro?
Aye.
Ms. McDade?
Aye.
Mr. Vadney?
Aye.
Emily Copeland?
Aye.
Unanimous, seven, zero.
Dr. Copeland, can I stop the share? I just don't want to do it. I was just going to stop the share. I might blink your screen first.
Oh, there we go.
All right. Thank you.
Actually, you know, what I was using, which was really helpful was the split screen because then I could see everybody and the share, which was nice.
Right. Steve, why don't you mute everyone except the, the committee? For. We don't get that, a lot of that background noise. Okay.
All right. Mr. Ferber, can I have a motion for discussion and action on item A, please?
I move for discussion and action on the letter to RIDE regarding withdrawal from our stage two application. Second.
Second by Mr. Shears. Dr. Kenworthy?
Thank you. So in, in, in your backup and in, I think linked to our agenda, it's a copy for everyone to see. One of the things I'm requesting tonight is, is your authorization to need to release this letter to the school building authority, those individuals who work in the school construction area at the Rhode Island Department of Education to, you know, and there's probably some, some mixed feelings on this at this point anyway, but you know, to unfortunately have to withdraw our stage two application. I think there has been some kind of underlying discussion already about with someone, you know, the uncertainty in, in our economy and where things are going to go, whether this would be the time, the right time to, to put, you know, the, the request forward that we know would have resulted in a $68 million bond request forward to the town in the fall. However, the, the reason for this withdrawal request and what this letter indicates is not solely because of that. It really has to do with, we received notice, this has been an ongoing discussion with, with the school, school building authority at RIDE for a little over a month now. We had received notice that, you know, they would not be able to approve our application if we were not able to fully show that, that transfer of land on the Melville property that, as you know, is really integral to us being to move, being able to move forward with, with that proposed project. Because all of, you know, our, our, our projects, we're touching every, every school, really trying to make good enhancements at every school. Everything really tied in to each other. You know, this was really a suggestion on the right end as well, that if we, if we could not produce the formal documentation showing that that land transfer had taken place, then, then they were probably not going to be able to, to approve our request. And they gave us the option to withdraw at this time. So we had started those discussions. We have, we have, you know, everything in place that, that you could have other than that final documentation. You know, we have, we have verbal consent, some letters to show. Mr. Rayner, our town administrator, you know, has, has, has done everything he can to, to bring that to fruition. But then particularly with the start of the COVID-19 crisis and, and, you know, the fact that this has to go through many channels on the federal government side, you know, we, we would not be able to show that in, in time to, to gain approval. So that's what this letter indicates. It, it will allow us the flexibility to say, you know, we, we know that we have a, you know, a very good, very well-vetted proposal together. And when the time is right, we can decide to resubmit that. We could do that, just so you know, as early as September. But again, maybe we want to kind of see where the next few months take us and, and what the economic climate is, is like. And then decide when, when we wanted to resubmit.
So, so it seems, so if we don't, if we withdraw now, it certainly won't be on the ballot. And I agree, it's the climate's horrible. The climate's horrible perhaps for doing that, but we're talking about two years later when we would actually be, aside from a special election. We've been postponing for two years.
We could go a few We could go, uh, a few different ways. Like I said, um, they, they, they are allowing another window of opportunity for districts to submit in September. Let's say if all of, let's say we came out of this all of a sudden, um, quicker than we thought we were going to and, 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 you know, the economy really started to pick back up again, and the stars looked like they were aligning, you know, we could push for as early as a September resubmission and, and try to move forward as best we could for the November ballot. Or we could, we could wait. Um, we don't have to do this in an official election. Like you said, we, we could do this at, at any point in time in a year and then hold a special election. So.
Other, other communities have done this. The special elections are not inexpensive.
Right. So we have, we'd have some things to consider there, but I think at this point, um, if, you know, if we left the application in, we run the risk of a couple of things. If, if, you know, from what we've, we've heard, it's probably going to get rejected. Um, and then that, you know, that could look worse for us, uh, in, in the big picture. And, and it maybe create some extra work we'd have to do upfront when we wanted to resubmit. Um, and then, you know, as we've discussed already, we've got, we've got a lot of uncertainty around the, the economic situation.
Can I, can I, um, as somebody that's been in the real estate business for the last 50 years, on the building committee, uh, head of the, whatever we call it, the capital spending for the bricks and mortar, I wrote down a few points that I'd like to make in this regard, and this comes from both the thought and the heart and working on this for over the last year, year and a half. The world has changed. Financially, to go ahead with this right now would be irresponsible, both on the local and state level. Education delivery has changed, especially on the high school level. Oh, I reviewed the Newport, uh, critique from their high school and was sent that. And I can tell you that to agree with what the state of Rhode Island wants now, that will approve, we would be getting an inferior product at the end. Room sizes, counts of the projected for the people, not making the school large enough at the end, all sorts of things that they're, they've tightened. I was very, very, very disappointed by reading that critique. I didn't get to see the Portsmouth one, but I was just aghast at seeing what, what they had said in Newport on it. As, as far as, uh, I believe that if, if we cannot do it right, we should not do it at all. In other words, you should, you should do something if you're going to do it and go through all those costs. The state has said that they're approximately $200 million. They were saying that they had a hole to begin with before this hit. Then on the TV, they got together the heads of the various, uh, uh, Matty Yellow and whatnot, and they borrowed another 300 million. So as far as going through on, on what it is, I personally have no faith, and I'm saying this with my heart, as somebody to put a product, if the town would be going into the hock, that what they would okay, uh, for us to get any kind of reimbursement would not be adequate. I am not going to support this. If this fails, I would put out a motion to just chuck it completely, totally. I will not support working with the, uh, uh, schools, uh, with the state anymore with this. I've been doing this for 50 years, and what they said and what they critiqued and what they said for their elements on it, there is absolutely no way to put out a product now on it going forth. And when you're finally ready to go ahead, if you do it something, your budget will be changed, the income from the town will be changed. What may be required, especially at the high school and that, for rooms and putting out to people and spaces and that, might have all changed. I think really, I was so disappointed by reading that. So, like I say, I'm not going to be voting in favor of this if there's a motion, uh, to do this for two years, not because I want to go forward with it now. I want to just close this off completely after doing all this work and expending all this money, because I feel that what we'd be getting would be an inferior product. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, um, I mean, I, I, the, the motion on the table is to withdraw our stage two application, um, which then enables us to, uh, at some point in the future, um, resubmit this or revise plan, but we're not making any decisions on that right now. It is just a motion to withdraw this. Um, my only concern is, and I mean, I support this motion to withdraw this. I don't think it's the time to be, um, you know, supporting it for the reason that, uh, Dr. Kenworthy said. Um, but there are provisions in place for us to submit, and I'm, I think I'm asking, uh, Mr. Diaro on this. Um, there are provisions that we can submit, uh, kind of, uh, but I don't know what the word would be, but a modified capital plan, because at, at some point, you know, even if we don't submit this, we are going to want to submit some kind of capital plan so that we can get some reimbursement for the repair and maintenance stuff that we want to do, right?
My, my comment would be, we should be the masters of our own destiny and what we can handle and what we look at on the financing ourselves and the plan. We should keep the plans that we've paid for and all those ideas and keep them in file, but then work with it over time for what we can do and for what we can afford more on our own. I think we're going to be safer and on a much stronger basis.
Okay. I think, uh, good point if you're talking about new construction, but I'm still just talking about our regular maintenance stuff that usually at a minimum, we get 35% reimbursement. Um, and I think we still want to try and get that. So how does the withdrawal of the application affect those items?
No, so Diaro?
It's, it's Mr. Diaro. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, so there, there are basically two tracks. Um, there's the major renovation, new construction track, which we went down. Uh, and then there's the, what they call, I think, fast track, um, uh, for the, uh, basic maintenance type items. Uh, we'll have to, um, start that process, which is much less cumbersome, doesn't require as much work, um, and submit a new five-year capital plan that would not include these projects, but more of the traditional, uh, maintenance roofs, uh, electrical, all that kind of stuff.
And we can do that. We don't have a, we can do that at a later date.
We could do that at a later date.
Okay. So, uh, any additional discussion on withdrawing the, uh, application? Um, uh, Dr. Kenworthy, you sent the, you sent the letter. We don't have to send the letter from the school committee, right? You just need.
I'm just, just, yeah, just seeking your approval endorsement. I will, I will send the, actually, um, I'm, I'm still, I'm here, as you know, in the oven building. So when we end, I'm, I'm going to, just to get this, because there, we're kind of right at the cusp of, of when they wanted a decision from us of whether we're going to withdraw. So I'm going to get this letter out, um, tonight. When we, I mean, if, if you approve, um, I'll update the date and put a real signature on here and, uh, send everyone a copy, and I'll forward a copy over to Mr. Rayner so he can inform the town council as well.
Okay. So all in favor of, um, I'm going to, actually, it's got to be a roll call, Bart, sorry about this. All, uh, I'm going to ask all in favor of, uh, what was our language here again? Withdrawing the letter to ride, or sending the letter to with, ride to withdraw the stage two application. Mr. Ferber?
Aye.
Aye? Mr. Shears?
Nay.
You, you want to keep the stage two application?
No. In other words, I believe you had said that the stage two would be kept, uh, and then revisit it at a later time. I don't want to revisit it.
Right. No, this is just a motion to actually withdraw the stage two application.
And excuse me, I changed my vote to that I agree that we should send him the letter.
You should withdraw. Okay. Ms. Holtman?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. McDade?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Radney?
Aye.
Mr. Payaro?
Aye.
Emily Copeland?
Aye.
Seven zero, approved, uh, withdraw the stage two application, please.
I'll do that.
Okay. Uh, may I have a motion for business B, please?
Um, I move for discussion and action on the revised school calendar for the, uh, 2019, 2020 school year.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shears. Dr. Kenworthy?
Okay, so, uh, you have in your backup, um, revised school calendar for current school year, 2019, 2020. Um, what I tried to do is, uh, just reflect all of the changes that have taken place so far, uh, due to school closure and distance learning. So that basically would be from, uh, March 13th, um, through, uh, the, and, and I updated it through the end of April, when, when we know right now this current phase of school closures will continue through. There may be additional changes that we have to come back and make, um, you know, to, to update as far as May and June. But, but right now, I, um, what I'm putting in front of you, asking for approval, is just an updated calendar based on what we know so far. So, uh, the big changes you would see reflected are the, the move, moving of the, uh, spring vacation week, if you will, um, which started this all off, um, which was moved to the week of March 16th, and that's what districts all used as their planning week for distance learning. Um, and we've inserted the, the dates, um, where RIDE has asked everyone to follow the same school calendar for the, the, the month of April throughout distance learning. So April 3rd and 17th, um, are, are days, we've, the April 3rd date's obviously already passed, but there'll be another one coming up on the 17th, which will be considered just teacher planning or professional development days, uh, no distance learning expectation for students. However, the caveat that RIDE has included there is that we can still count them as instructional days towards our 180 count. So we will do that. Uh, and then this week, as I alluded to, the ninth and 10th, uh, RIDE is asking all districts to just take off completely from distance learning and give everybody a long weekend. And then the other change that I made here, um, Mrs. Sapala had alluded to extending our third quarter marking period out two weeks, to April 21st, which will just allow us to make sure that every, every, you know, student has had the opportunity to catch up on anything that will actually be officially counted for third quarter. So again, um, no, no changes will be reflected from May and June, but I could very well be bringing, uh, some, some changes back to you at a future time.
Okay. Ms. Holtman, question?
No.
All right. Sorry, you just highlighted. All right. Uh, all, we're going to have a, a vote, uh, those, uh, yea or nay on, uh, revising the school calendar. Mr. Ferber?
Yay.
Mr. Shears?
Yay.
Uh, Holtman?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, McDade? Ms. McDade?
Aye.
Uh, I'm going down the list here. Mr. Radney?
Aye.
That was, was that a aye?
Aye. Yes.
Okay. Uh, uh, Mr. Payaro?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Emily Copeland, aye. Unanimous, seven zero. All right. Um, so, uh, thank you all again for, uh, the meeting and all the provision of really awesome information. And our next meeting, uh, will actually be with the town council on the budget. Um, so keep that in mind. That's not a formal full school committing, meeting. We're just participating in, um, their meeting at the end of the month. And then we will have our next, um, official school committee meeting, May 5th. But if things change, we may have to call, you know, depending on, as needs arise, um, you know, additional meetings. So. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'm moved. Second.
Uh, you can just raise your hands on this one. All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous, seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
So have a good evening. Good night.
Good night.
Have a good holiday.